The Town Hall Meeting on the 2023 Budget Organized by the Ministry of Budget and Economic Planning Took place today in Jalingo Taraba State's capital. The meeting was held in respect to the 2023 budget, which was opened by Honorable Commissioner, Ministry of Budget and Economic Planning Solomon Elisha.
Premier Ministers, Our Chiefs and Eniors present here. Please permit me to stand on the existing protocol as established by the Masters Ceremony. I am delighted to welcome you all to the... The Town Hall Meeting is a veritable platform for interaction and exchange of ideas among citizens from across the various sections of the state. In this word, to note that before the meeting today, Zonal Stakeholders Consultative Meeting were held in Takun and Bali Local Government area to elicit inputs for the 2023 budget from the South and Central Senatorial Zones. As you may be aware, the 2023 budget process in the state has since commenced. The universal best practice is to engage the grassroots people for that is bottom-up approach in budgeting. So, what we are about to do today is to secure and ensure citizens buy-in and participation in the budget preparation, which is one of the Public Sector Financial Management, PFM reforms. This is the first entry point for the budget process and the government has highly prioritized this effort in the social-economic development of the state. At this juncture, permit me to congratulate my mentor, Architect Darius Dixon Ishaku's administration for signing into the Open Government Partnership, OGP. By this, Taraba State Government has committed herself to reforms which are aimed at transparency and accountability in all her undertaking. Your Excellency, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. In our quest to ensure a robust and equitable 2023 budget, the ministry has placed high premium on the need to solicit for input from stakeholders. It is in light of the above that the ministry have organized this Town Hall Meeting. The outcomes of today's meeting will definitely form the major superstructure input of the 2023 budget. I want to crave your indulgence, citizens of Taraba State who are represented here by civil society organizations. Let us look at Taraba State under the year... Let us look at Taraba State under the year overview and see where we are coming from before 2014 and where we are today and where we are going to. This invitation was extended to the opposition party. We are not here, they are not... We are not happy they are not here. This is governance, this is not politics. Let us come and discuss development of Taraba State. They are not bothering about development. Once again, I wish to welcome all and sundry to this Town Hall Meeting and praise for a fruitful engagement. Thank you for your kind attention, thank you.
This meeting was graced by its Excellency, Architect Darius Dixon Ishaku, Honorable Commissioners, Royal Fathers, Youth Organizations, and other organizations invited. The Executive Governor of Taraba State, Architect Darius Dixon Ishaku, in his speech said, "We are taking considerable steps to reshape the state, creating fiscal space for infrastructural development. The government is targeted to spend over 50% of its income in economy, infrastructure, and to also continue to put focus on education, health, and women empowerment."
Delighted to address you this day at the Stakeholders' Consultation and Engagement Meeting to collect inputs into the 2023 pros budget of Taraba State Government for the next fiscal year. Your Excellencies, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, it is indeed gratifying that the budget priorities of this administration has always reflected the state government's rescue agenda. This was the document that was put in place immediately outside, sworn in as the State Government 29th of May 2015. This has brought to bear the importance of inclusiveness and leaving no one behind as projects are cited in all the zones. I admit to state here that we have taken considerable steps to reposition the state through investment in public service delivery and enhance its social protection, especially for vulnerable populations. These when education and health, which are the principal components of human capital development, are being considered. Similarly, investment in infrastructure, which are critical for upholding competitiveness, creating jobs, and ensuring the promotion of the well-being of our people are receiving and will continue to receive strategic attention. Also, timely provision of farm inputs and equipment, which are also critical for food security and the provision of portable water for the populace are given a good attention. I assure you that this administration will continue to bring remarkable improvement to the living conditions of our people through value restoration. When subsequently, the trust of government fiscal policy in the coming year is to sustain reforms, enhance fiscal resilience. Therefore, the emphasis will be on the following. One, improving revenue mobilization and creating fiscal space for infrastructural development, higher revenue generation will enable the government to effectively deliver public services and invent more in infrastructure. To achieve this, government will maximize the huge potential and optimize the operational efficiency of the state's internal revenue services. For the 2023 budget, the state government proposes to spend about 57% of its income on capital expenditure, complete ongoing projects, and commission them, while about 43% is intended for personnel overhead and costs and procurrent expenditures. Ladies and gentlemen, as we continue with the rescue agenda, we are certain that ideas are critical in deepening our government governance processes. Therefore, constructive ideas and suggestions at this meeting are welcome and we will continue to inform our budgeting process. I want to assure you that the inputs from this Town Hall Meeting will be considered before presenting the proposed budget to the State House of Assembly for appropriation. Therefore, feel free to ask any meaningful suggestions or questions for inclusion in the 2023 budget, so that we will have the feeling that yes, and indeed, the public has participated in the input of our 2023 budget. Distinguished gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, our Royal Fathers, it is my own... My singular honor and pleasure to declare this workshop and this participation open. Thank you for being here and please, I'm expecting the very good and questions that will improve all of us. Thank you and God bless you.
A debate was conducted between the Executive Governor, Architect Darius Dixon Ishaku, Honorable Commissioner, Ministry of Budget and Economic Planning Taraba State, Solomon Elisha, Mr. Jovita Shafi, with CTV Planning Department, retired leader of the Civil Liberty Organization, highly represented. It was an open session for everyone to ask question and get answers from any of the debaters. A question was directed at the governor about how far he has gone in his agenda for the state. He said he finished his agenda within seven years.
Your Excellency, of recent, you came up with a statement that you have completed your assignment in Taraba State in seven years instead of eight. Your Excellency, can you by extension explicate and substantiate this statement?
Thank you very much for asking that question. I wish you would have heard my speech of 29th May 2015 and I would have been answering you, asking you the speech I made in that day. And all the things I said seven years plus ago, I have quietly implementing all of them. We have done all and we have done beautifully well. You go to agriculture. We have done a lot of it. I was in Abuja when they put all this pyramid and somebody was telling me that all the rice they put in that pyramid came from your state in Taraba State. In agriculture, I'm very proud of it. What again, let's go. Well, I can go on and on. If you are talking of infrastructure, the road is all over, littered all over the section of the state. And to tell you, all these roads are roads that are planned. They lead from somewhere to another place and that place needs it and from there, they take whatever produce that is brought from the rural hinterland to other parts of the country. All the roads that were built in across the state, they have meaning.
The Director, the Honorable Commissioner, Ministry of Budget and Economic Planning must be very central to the substances already recorded. But one area that I would like to draw the Commissioner's attention, it has to do with his increased revenue profile. What has been the magic? How did you do it? And were you able to collaborate with other agencies to be able to achieve this? The government of... Architect Darius Dixon Ishaku is a government of plan. This is the only administration that came in prepared. Once you look at the rescue mission agenda, you should be able to understand where we are coming from, where we are today, and where we are going to. We may not be generating as Legos, but we have improved in percentages. In 2014, before the advent of this present administration, our IGR as a state was less than 4 billion. So, I'm talking to you now, the Commission of Finance is there. Our... We... We... For the 2020-2023, we are earning over 13 billion as our IGR. We have grown over 100%, sir. And this is as a result of the doggedness of the leadership at the state's... Is it State Board of Internal Revenue? And some of the innovation that we are supervised by His Excellency himself, we put in a lot of... A lot of mechanism, which include computerization of some of the aspects and then bringing in some... Some manpower and the seriousness of the leadership. And again, that comes to the question of GDP, our gross domestic product. Maybe the CBN are here to prove me wrong, but the truth of the matter is that Jalingo happens to be one of the states in the northern Nigeria that have a lot of bank transactions. The meaning here is that there is a lot of money in circulation in Jalingo and Taraba State in general. What does that mean? Salaries are being paid promptly. If somebody said that there is no salary, "Oga, I'm pay November and December", they will know whether there is salary or there is no salary. Plato are owing five months. Benue are owing, I can't say. You can't compare us with Adamawa. Our salary structure, Adamawa are two different thing. They are not... They are not... They are not paying what we are paying in Taraba State. And again, in the areas of agriculture, which you have mentioned, the governor have... Have... Have made a lot of atmospheric convivial for agricultural development in Taraba State. Really, to look at budget fracking. Let me ask Mr. Fidelis Nasuka, who is representing the... That organization, to what extent have you been able to track Taraba's budget?
Health sector have witnessed tremendous development and revolution during your era as the governor of the state. But I'm always concerned, Your Excellency, that whenever the issue of achievements in the state is mentioned, I don't know, sir. Primary healthcare is not mentioned. Your Excellency, you have developed primary healthcare to the glory of God and for the benefit of the people of the state. You have provided free healthcare services to 650 remote rural areas in Taraba, free of charge. And that has been captured in most of the documents. We have developed over 100 primary care centers that are working 24 hours per day, Your Excellency, with complement of drugs. That has... Always, they don't mention this, sir. Sir, this is my concern with apologies, sir, but I think primary care should be in the front corner. Apart from water, our rural roads, thank you, sir.
Busy showing our roads and water as if it's the only thing I have done in the state. I remember in one of our journals, I told the reporter that I was in Gembu General Hospital, visiting the patient when it rained and I got soaked myself and the patient in the hospital. And I made up my mind that I will not go out despite the fact that there is this, he was urging me to. Because I want to remember that Gembu Hospital Road needs to be fixed. I did it. It's now one of the persons with us you can talk of in this state. My attention was pleasantly called to these primary health centers by the acting ambassador of America when she came here. See that, sir? You have not been making noise about your primary healthcare. As of that time, there were more than 158 wards that had functioning primary health centers. He said to us, "That is a greater feat in health". As I speak to now, all the 168 wards have a functioning healthcare center. And that is due to his hard work. The questionnaire, the man who questioned me. And that is why he's moved to where he is today. And I think we have done well there. He's there for everybody to see. Maybe my Commissioner of Planning now and the information will throw their satellite towards primary healthcare. Yes, let the next man ask his question.
The issue of engagement of communities, just like you've said, you emphasize on the issue of monitoring and evaluation. There is need for community-led monitoring, which will help instead of getting someone at the state level or anywhere to go to the grassroots to monitor things. The people themselves need to monitor that because the project that goes on, activity that goes on at the grassroots is for them, is for them. So, the spirit of ownership has to be evolved from the community. And lastly, my question now is, we have got traditional institutions upgraded, some even chiefdoms created, but then, how can we harness these traditional rulers as they are spread out to be able to enforce or ensure there is development and crisis management at the grassroots? We have started doing a little bit in my organization, a non-governmental organization. We have only eight... We are in eight local government only. So, in the nutshell, we have been working with both the communities and their particularly health facilities. We organize the communities, relate them to the facilities so that they should understand their different problems around there and also face the problem without telling the government about it, but we put up a report and inform the government. And we have been visiting the local governments, most of the directors' primary healthcare in particular can witness them. Thank you, sir.
I agree with you and we have started the process of harnessing our Royal Fathers. If you listened earlier when I was talking about security and how we had trained them, we are likely using them, keying them into monitoring the activities of criminals, reporting systems that they need to use, and so on and so forth. I didn't want to waste time there when I was answering, but the truth was that an ambassador, while I went to get a visa in Abuja, asked me that they've been monitoring Taraba and that our crisis has been reducing. What is the magic? And I stood up, raised my hand, I said prayers. And he said, "No, it cannot be only prayers". And insisted. I said, "Well, we are using our traditional rulers". He said, "Now you are talking. The prayers will now work". We use the traditional rulers. We have brought them here for some witch courses. We are still in the process of teaching them more and more, not only on security, but in administration and even in spreading our seedlings, our agricultural informations and so forth. We've been using them extensively. I would like this ministry to link up with you if you have an NGO. Since you said you are in six... Eight local government. If you can link up with them so that the remanent local governors, they can key in with you, give you all the assistance you needed so as to help you to facilitate the NGO you are doing in their respective wards and local government areas.
As the head of the Federal Ministry of Information and Culture in Taraba State, we were given an assignment because on the 18th and 19th of November, the World Toilet Summit will be taking place in Nigeria in Abuja. And my concern, sir, Digawa has been declared openly defecation-free. But to my amazement, some weeks ago in Taraba, in Machaleen, I was just passing by and I saw the deaths filled up in that roundabout. And by the time I came back in the evening, there was water all over. Sir, there's a threat of flood in Taraba. And the menace of the flood will be worse than what Boko Haram has ever done in many years. I don't know what the... The agencies, the necessary agencies are doing about it. Sir, I want you to look into it. And areas of spots may have many young people. As a mother, I get this talk. Please, I give spots, the Ministry of Sports, all the necessary supports, sir. God bless you, sir.
I hope the Commissioner is here with me and what you are saying is correct. I will make sure that he wakes up from slumber. We have all the equipments, those that can clean and throw away the dirt. And I wonder why they are not doing it. It's a very good observation. You talked about the flood.
I should say that I have example of the flood that ongoing nastiness is going to be less than what floods likely consume.
Madam, what was your second question? Flood? Oh, spores? Yes, we are going to do that. I just appointed the new Commissioner for that ministry and for that purpose. And he's doing well. He led them to give me the torch of the... Of the torch, the flame or torch of flame that is going around the whole country just last week. It's one of the reasons we got somebody a bit more energetic to that spot. So, your two questions are well noted and I assure you, we are going to work on them. Thank you.
The governor was presented with three categories of award by the Civil Liberty Organization.
We want to present a thank you award for signing into OGP and another thank you award for signing into OGP. We at the CSU's, we know the importance of OGP. We know how beneficial it is to sovereign states in the country and even the world at large. And we know what we are going to benefit now and thereafter. They are saying thank you for giving us this platform. The second one is the verb art. This art protects our future, our mothers and our children. We are also saying thank you for signing into this law. And we are also appealing that the process of gazetting the law should be speeding so that we start implementation in earnest. And the last one is coming from our National President of the Green Nigerian Project and is a green, executive green award of achievement for creating chiefdoms in Taraba State, which represent freedoms and it preserves our cultures and promotes our traditions. Sir, congratulations once again. I want to use this opportunity to thank all Tarabans that indeed we came, we saw, and we conquered. Were it not so, we wouldn't be giving these awards. Were it not so, you won't be as happy as we are. So we thank God Almighty for this opportunity he has given, sir. And we are always available. We are praying that we will transit to the red chambers. We are not to serve Taraba this time, but to serve the nation. Thank you very much indeed.